I would like to call the meeting of the Oregon City Commission to order. This is Wednesday, August 5th, and this is our regularly scheduled meeting. Good evening, I'm Alice Norris, the mayor.
Good evening, Daphne West, Commission President.
James Nacita, Commissioner.
Doug Neely, City Commissioner.
Rocky Smith, Commissioner.
Would you be pleased to join me in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As you probably all know, this is Oregon's 150th birthday, and we have each meeting during this year a sesquicentennial moment where we will uncover some rare and unusual fact about our fair city. And this evening's sesquicentennial moment is being brought to us by Commissioner Doug Neely.
On Memorial Day, I got to misread the time of the Memorial Day service. I was up there, and I got there early, and I was looking at gravestones there at the Pioneer Community Center.
One step away, one step away. Now we know where the bones are buried.
I'll try that again. The Oregon City Pioneer Senate.
Couldn't we really cut that video?
There's not any graves there anymore. There was.
Well, yes, there was a grave there at one time. That's true. I believe I occasioned to be there. But in any case, the -- and I saw something on the gravestone that stimulated me to seek some help. Karen, are you here? Karen Mori, she is a tremendous resource.
You're talking about Karen Mori?
Yes, Karen Mori. She's a tremendous resource at the Museum of the Oregon Territory in looking up historical facts. And she looked up most of this, in fact, she looked up almost all the information I'm about to present to you, and I wanted to recognize that. I'm not going to mention what I saw at the gravestone that triggered my interest until I finish my presentation. It has to do with a specific person by the name of Charles Mooney, who was born in Ireland, who married in Ireland, who moved to the United States. He kind of followed, actually, Sidney Moss from place to place, from Jefferson, Indiana, to Madison, to Indianapolis, Greencastle, and Fort Wayne, Indiana, and elsewhere. Sidney Mooney was in charge of various projects, road projects, some lock projects, but not in Oregon City. And Charles Mooney would move to these areas and find employment with him. And later on, in 1853, well, actually, Sidney Moss moved here to Oregon City. And several years later, about 10 years later, Sidney Moss, who was historically a recognized person here in this area, Sidney Moss was taking a ferry on a trip from Corvallis coming into Oregon City, and he saw this gentleman on the ferry who started aquarium. "Had you ever been to this place or that place?" and so forth. And sure enough, this individual, Charles Mooney, had come to the Oregon Territory, and he was actually operating the ferry. So they started talking about old times and so forth. And, you know, there's not a great deal here that brings up Charles Mooney as a significant figure in terms of Oregon City's history. He didn't establish any schools, apparently didn't work on the locks. He didn't do anything that would think be historically recognized in general. But, well, a few weeks before he died, Sidney Moss visited him and talked to him a while. Sidney Moss was a fairly old person at the point, 84-years-old. Charles Mooney was a bit older than he was. Charles Mooney was, at that point, probably bedridden and not that far away probably from death. But Charles asked him, "Well, what do you attribute your long life to?" to Charles Mooney. And his response was this. Now, this was from an article in the Courier that was followed a little bit after the obituary that was written to him, which Karen looked up. And it was written in the vernacular in terms of the quotes, so I'll give it a try. "And I'll tell ye," was giving him a long life, "I'll tell ye, it's voting Democratic ticket and drinking whiskey." Now, this may make everybody that's a Democrat very pleased, but it occurred to me that in his particular lifetime, he came before statehood.
To a weak town.
And then he, of course, transitioned into statehood. If this were the case, he probably would have voted for a person by the name of Douglas instead of a person of Lincoln at the time. So do my Democratic people that share the same party, the Democrat that I do, that wasn't necessarily always the best party to vote for necessarily. But anyway, but that's what he attributed his long life to.
Voting Democrat and drinking whiskey.
That's right. Now, as I said, none of that sounds very historically significant, so why did it catch my eye? What caught my eye, what was on the gravestone, and I will read it specifically to you. What was on the gravestone was -- I better have it here. What was on the gravestone was that he was -- oh, shoot, this is terrible.
Make something up.
Well, it was the one thing that I didn't print out.
Would you like to hold that over till the next meeting?
Nope. Nope. I will tell you that he was born in Ireland in the 1700s. He died in Oregon in the 1800s. The birth date is given, the death date is given. He lived to be 106 and 1/2 years old. He was probably the oldest person in the transition of the Oregon Territory to Oregon Statehood. And that's what makes him significant.
All because he voted Democrat and drank whiskey. All right. Don't let us say you can't learn rare and useful facts.
Oh, here they are. It's on the very top.
That was supposed to be a sesquicentennial moment.
Well, given he lived 106 and 1/2 years, you can get more than a moment for trying that out. January 1st, 1787, August 30th, 1894.
Wow. It's a good, long life. Thank you very much. Okay, moving right along to our business meeting. The next thing on our agenda is citizen comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on items not on the agenda. And, you know, the shtick, fill out the card, and then please give your name and the city in which you live when you come to the microphone. I just have one this evening, and that's Marcy Barrett. Yes, you start whenever you like. You're on.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Marcy Barrett. I am the AFSCME Local 350-2 President for the City of Oregon City, as well as an employee of nine years. As you probably know, we have been in bargaining sessions with city management for almost six months. At our last session on July 20th, the union negotiation team felt both sides were very close to settling the contract. In fact, so close, we might have even been able to settle it that day. Unfortunately, that didn't happen. The session took a bizarre twist when the city's human resources director, Jim Loffler, handed our team a 40-page contract with language changes we had never seen in prior sessions, and in fact, was a violation of our ground rules in bargaining. Needless to say, the union negotiation team was stunned and disappointed. It made us feel like our months of meeting and time were for nothing, as well as baffled as to why Mr. Loffler would think we would negotiate current contract language that was just negotiated two years ago. Our union members are the frontline employees who serve the citizens and have to justify and defend your rate increases, levies, and decisions to the public on a daily basis. We do not understand why city management is offering us half the cost of living adjustment that they are getting when the adopted budget by you, the commission, has the same cost of living adjustment for all employees. It is beyond comprehension to our union members, the frontline employees, how city management justifies a 3% COLA and bonuses for themselves and is offering us a 1.5 COLA for the first year and 2% for second year without any justification. We were told by Mr. Loffler in one of our bargaining sessions that he would be negligent to offer the union employees the same COLA without getting commission approval in this economy. But yet, Mr. Loffler came before you on behalf of management and asked for a 3% COLA, which you approved. If the city didn't have the money, we would be more understanding of Mr. Loffler's position, like we have been in the past when the city has had budget woes. Because of all this, the city has forced the union to go to mediation, which will continue to cost the city money. All we, the frontline employees, are asking for is to be treated equal and fair. Mr. Loffler keeps telling us at the table he gets his direction from you, but yet what he is offering is not what is reflected in the budget that you adopted. We are hopeful that you will direct the management team to enter into a fair and equitable agreement and refrain from aggressive bargaining tactics. A topic that came up during negotiations was opting out of medical coverage for spouses and dependents. The city has told employees for years that it is mandatory to cover spouses and dependents, even if they have other coverage. The city's insurance broker checked into it, and that is not true. Dependents do not have to be covered, just the employee. To save money, we have asked the city management team to stop requiring spouses and dependents be covered if they have other coverage elsewhere, and we are being pushed back on this topic. We are aware of two employees who receive this exception currently. The union negotiation team is hopeful that we will reach an equitable and fair contract agreement. I would be more than happy to answer any questions you may have on the union's position, and I can be reached at 503-657-0891. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, I see no other citizen comment individuals, so thank you all for coming. While they are leaving, let's look at the agenda. Are there any items that anyone wishes to -- hello? Have reordered for any reason? I have none this evening. Seeing none, then we will take the agenda in the order in which it is listed on our printed agenda.
We have a couple, I think, an added item.
Under reports?
No.
You have an added item?
Am I correct? The sense of the commission?
The urban reserves extension is item 6K.
Okay. Yeah.
Right, it's on the agenda that was at our table, and that's been printed as revised and out to the public. Anything else? Okay, let's move on then. The first item of business is an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Oregon City and the Oregon City Urban Renewal Commission for a loan for $2.5 million for renovation of the McLean Clinic for our new city hall. On staff, Mr. Patterson.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Commission, and you should have a revised resolution at your place this evening.
Aye.
It's very similar, but there are some changes in there. But a little background, is the city in 2008 purchased the McLean Clinic, and you did so with, or the Urban Renewal Agency did that with Urban Renewal Funds. There was a discussion about the use of that. It was determined that would be used for city hall. And as we began to look at the financing for urban renewal, our recommendation is to provide financial capacity, particularly in looking at whether or not the Cove project is one that you will approve. Is, we're recommending to you at this time that you provide a loan to the Urban Renewal Agency to finance the renovation. This resolution provides that loan. Should the Cove not take place, you would have the capacity in Urban Renewal to pay that loan off. If the Cove develops, then again, we could pay that loan off, it appears right now, in 2014. The resolution calls for a loan of up to $2.5 million. Right now, that renovation is underway, and we hope that we will actually come in below that amount. That depends on construction issues or any directions that you may have in regards to that facility. The loan is for five years with an option to renew for up to five. The interest is either the rate of return of monies invested in the local government pool immediately prior to the adoption loan, it's my understanding, I think that's running right now, like .085, or a minimum of 1 and 1/2 percent per year, so we're looking at the 1 and 1/2. What the resolution provides for is repayment through an interest-only portion, through 1 through 4, and looking at a balloon payment in the fifth year. And again, those payments would roughly be $37,500 and 1/2 thousand dollars with a balloon of 2.538 in year 2014. The resolution does provide that the Urban Renewal Agency can pay that loan off at any time during that period without penalty. This action is consistent with the Urban Renewal Plan and helps facilitate city's commission goal number three to address critical facility needs and objective one in completion of the renovation and move of city hall operation to the McLean Clinic. And I should say right now that that project is on schedule, and we're looking at a possible move-in date in October if we continue to remain there. So that's a quick glance of that. We can answer any questions you may have on that.
Actually, if you could address what changes, since we're just seeing this first, the changes between the two documents, please.
Different sections.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is it on?
Yes.
Okay. Mayor and Commissioners, do you have the old one and the new one, or is it side by side?
Mm-hmm.
They're very, very, very minor. On the very first intergovernmental agreement paragraph, where mine, sorry, the original one said "a Oregon corporation," and then it changed to "a duly activated public body, corporate, and politic created by ORS 457035."
Okay.
And down in sub-paragraph B, instead of "purchased it," it's now "purchased that And paragraph, sub-paragraph F, they added "and" ORS 294460, and an agreement for a loan as more fully set. And the rest of the changes, I had everything in section two, and attorneys broke that into six different paragraphs. Instead of a paragraph called "city fund remodel costs," "city fund loan repayment," that section became "loan," it just said one sentence, then the next five paragraphs were just taking out each of those sentences and putting them in their own separate thing called "term, interest repayment, prepayment extension." And those were the only changes.
Okay, thank you.
We're working on David, so he'll talk in multiple sentences, I suppose, just one.
Or at least write that way.
Thank you for that. Other questions? Commissioner Neely.
Mr. Weaver? We, the general fund oftentimes borrows from other funds to take us through the fiscal year, because the taxing year and the fiscal year are different. Is the interest rate that we have here similar to the?
Well, the general fund doesn't, all the funds are commingled, so it just has a negative balance in that.
So we don't even charge interest when we do that?
Correct.
When we shift those monies? Okay.
So the difference is, this is from one agency to another?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Any further questions or a motion, please? We've talked about this a bit.
I guess I'm --
Commissioner West?
I'm going to add one thing here. I think that this is really crucial to undertake this loan to free up the rest of our urban renewal money. After, or many of you don't know, but we were, four, yeah, four of us Commissioners were in Kaiser and in Woodburn last weekend looking at a new police station. And then this evening, we just had a report right before this meeting of how sorely our big financial constraints, all our museums are under in Oregon City. And we certainly need to, in my opinion, keep the urban renewal option open, and with an opportunity like the Cove, to have enough increment to help fund a, like Mr. Patterson was saying, goal three with our critical facility needs. So I don't know how else we'd be doing it. So on that note, I will move to approve the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Oregon City and the Oregon City Urban Renewal Commission to provide loan to Urban Renewal Commission to not exceed $2.5 million for remodel of McLean Clinic for city hall operations.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Neely.
May I, a mere discussion point, if I may?
Yes, yes. Discussion, please.
Our document here, this, of course, we are only one of the, the Oregon City Urban Renewal Commission also signs off on this. So this is being forwarded to that body. It's not really a question, it's a comment, and we are all members of that agency as well, and we'll be seeing this again at the Urban Renewal Agency Commission.
Thanks for the clarification. Any further comment or discussion? Seeing none, Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Commissioner Nacita?
No.
Hi.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes 3 to. Next item on the agenda is 6B, an amendment to the personal services agreement with Granicus for monthly managed services for our sound system and other equipment and software for web streaming, et cetera. Who's presenting this? Nancy?
Yes.
Nancy, I had our city recorder.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Before you is a renewal of a service contract for the streaming of city meetings on the Internet with Granicus Incorporated. The amendment extends the contract that was established a year ago for a three-year period. There is no increase in cost over the next, or over the first year of the contract. This amendment will continue our ability to stream the meetings and also add additional boards and commissions to the process. There are four boards and committees right now who are scheduled to launch web streaming this fall. They've agreed as a board or committee to do that. This service has been well-received by the community. It has addressed the city's need for better communication with the public, and is, it's like the technological foundation for the launch of our new electronic agenda packets this fall. The amendment is also like a springboard for additional features to improve our daily work processes. For instance, these features might include internal and external training opportunities electronically, our own video and broadcast opportunities, production of public service announcements. We could do community training videos such as how to reduce your water consumption, or what's new in Oregon City, or a tourist video, or how to apply for a building permit, you know, a visual of those things. We can even go live from a city event anywhere in town using the Granicus system. So we really only skim the surface of what Granicus can do for us. So staff is requesting the approval of the amendment in the amount of $60,500 for three years, and requests authorization for the city manager to add additional meeting bodies as they request them in the future. And I'm here to answer any of your questions.
Do you have questions about this contract renewal? Seeing none, may I have a motion then? Commissioner West?
It's going to be a quiet evening tonight, maybe. Well, I would like to move approval for an amendment to the PSA agreement with Granicus for monthly managed services.
Second. Thank you. Moved by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Smith. Any discussion?
I'll just add, I just think that this has been a wonderful tool to increase transparency of government meetings to the public, and we have a great new website, so I'm urging any viewer that are listening at home, go look, and it's, I was playing around, I couldn't remember, actually, I was looking for my urban renewal budget today, so I was going back through the minutes and trying to find right where it was, but it is really a neat thing to.
So easy to go on, yeah. Actually, I just wanted to let the public know which new advisory committees that'll be able to watch through web streaming, and that will be the Library Board, Historic Review Board, Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, we commonly call PRA, and the Transportation Advisory Committee this fall. Is that correct?
Right, that's correct.
With that, Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nacita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye.
Motion passes 5 to. Next, we have a contract for construction for a water line replacement project. Nancy, our city engineer and public works director, Nancy Karajara.
Good evening, Mayor Norris and Commissioners. We are ready to ask you to award the contract for our annual water line replacements. Throughout the year, we contracted with Wallace Engineering to complete the construction documents. We went out to bid in July, and now we have the qualified low bidder. It would be Tappany Underground with the low bid, and that was $807,000 approximately. The high bid was about $1.2 million. So there was quite a range, although you'll see by the list that the lower three bids were quite close, so there was some really good competition that we felt was a good thing for the city. And these water lines will be replacements throughout the city. They're based on our Water Master Plan, our capital improvement program. In addition to that, there's some that are considered high-maintenance lines from the Water Division and Public Works. But you will see that the majority of them are in the McLaughlin area. That is our oldest part of town, so.
Oh, yeah.
Not too tricky to figure out that those are, tend to be priorities. But there's a significant section on Washington Street which will complete our Washington Street replacement, all the way between 7th and the Washington Street Bridge, which is significant. And then, as you'll see, I noticed that we hadn't included a map in your report, I apologize for that, but we did provide one at your place tonight. And there's a long one on Monroe, there's some on East and Third Streets, and then there are a little bit on Linney Avenue, and then there's some additional water line replacement in Kanema, again, one of our older parts of town. So I'm happy to answer any questions that might have.
Commissioner West?
When these kinds of improvements are made, do you send out notices to the neighbors and postcards?
Um.
I'm just curious.
We do if we're making, for a water line project, we do if we're going to be turning the water off for a period of time, but we don't typically send out a direct mailing to announce that we're arriving.
You will be opening up streets?
Closing streets? Opening streets? Yes, we will be excavating streets, and we'll have traffic control. They'll be excavated during the day. We almost always close up the streets in the evening, though, and leave a gravel surface.
Thank you.
Or sometimes cold patch.
Commissioner Neely.
Do we have experience or know of other municipalities that have experiences at Tappany Underground?
We do. They did our 7th Street project.
Okay.
And actually, I know some others as well, but we have direct experience with them, and we were pleased with their performance.
Oh, how long do we expect this, what's the life of the water line?
I'll have to check the contract documents for sure, but this will probably take about five months to do all these water line improvements. And I can, I'll look in the contract documents to give you the actual contract completion date before the end of the meeting.
No, actually, my question was, what's the length of time, what's the life for the replacement pipe?
Oh, the ductal iron and pipe?
Yeah, that you're putting in.
It's 50-plus years.
Long time.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Unless there's unusual circumstances with corrosion, but if done properly, ductal iron has at least 50-year lifespan.
Thank you. Commissioner West?
Oh, on the order of transparency again, and then thinking of the notices. I wonder if you can post your, do you ever think of posting this on the website? Here's the actual streets that you're doing and sections?
We are working on that portion of the website. We always list our construction projects, but with the new website, we can provide even more details, and that's a great idea.
Commissioner West? Or, Commissioner Neely, how about?
I'll move to authorize the city manager to execute the contract for construction with Tappany Underground to provide construction services for the 2009 Water Systems Improvement Project.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Neely, second by Commissioner Smith. Is there a comment or discussion from anyone? Thank you. Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nacita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye.
Motion passes 5 to. Next is a Resolution 923, declaring the necessity and intent to appropriate real property and authorizing institution of condemnation proceedings if necessary. authorizing institution of condemnation proceedings if necessary for the I-205-213 Redland Road crossing. And actually, we have three in a row regarding that. Do you want to, do you want the staff to give us a report for all three of those, or do you prefer to have them broken up?
Whatever your preference is.
I think all three together might be, so, so one is that one, then the second one is the letter agreement closing documents for the Union Pacific Railroad property acquisition for the same intersection, and then the last, the third, is the local agency agreement between ODOT and Oregon City for the design of the crossing project. So, Nancy, again.
Correct. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is the first in a series of three commission actions that we're requesting you to take tonight that relate to the Highway 213 improvements between I-205 and Redland Road, fondly referred to as the Jug Handle and the Redland Road intersection improvements. The first one is, is a resolution that is somewhat of a process resolution, and it's an important step in terms of our legal requirements and conformity with the Federal Uniform Relocation Act. When you're doing projects that could require either easement or right-of-way acquisition, and if there is any potential for condemnation, which I think Mr. Sullivan would agree, there's always some potential for condemnation, it's very prudent to pass, for the commission to pass a resolution that shows that you're aware of that, and that basic, it declares the need for the project, and it provides some documentation on how the project came to be. The other thing that this resolution will do then is it provides a starting point for the city manager to go into negotiation with the property owners from whom we're acquiring either right-of-way or easements. And should you adopt this resolution this evening, then our right-of-way contractors will send letters to, to, to property owners, letting them know that we are going to start negotiations using the appraised values of the properties we need to acquire for the project. This resolution, while we do not know of any properties or easements down in the Redland Road area that we need to acquire, we also aren't far enough along with the final engineering to know if we might need a sliver here for a slope or a cut or whatever, and so this does apply to the entire length of the project. Specifically, we are aware that the two properties for the Jug Handle are, one is with Stein Oil at their card lock station, and then the other is a piece of the Metro South Transfer Station property. The...
May I ask a question on this particular one? You're shifting to the next one, it'd be kind of awkward to ask a question on the first one, I'll figure that. I'm thinking of the Redland Road crossing, we're talking about the, the intersection where Redland Road goes into 213 and extending on down to Holcomb.
Correct.
Okay. And at the time we discussed this before, we, the plans that, that I saw, it had a dedicated right turn onto 213 from that intersection. A dedicated right turn, however, did not extend all the way down to Holcomb Road.
That's right.
I had made the recommendation at that time, however, to procure a sufficient amount of right-of-way so that in the future, we would have that ability should it be needed to actually do that. Now, is that still, is that under consideration?
Yeah, actually, at this point, we are adding a lane, a southbound lane on Highway 213 that extends underneath the Holcomb Overpass. So, that right turn lane will go into that additional southbound lane that gets dropped right after the Holcomb.
Yes, that I understand.
It'll get dropped before the Redland Bridge.
That, but that's not what I'm referring to. I was referring to the, actually having that right turn lane of the, of the southbound 213, that right turn lane actually start at Holcomb.
Oh, that direction to Holcomb, I see what you're saying, right.
Yeah, that direction to Holcomb, and, and, and you, and that was not in the plans, but I made the recommendation that you would go ahead and get sufficient right-of-way should that be needed in the future. Now, is that being considered?
Uh, yes, we are considering that, and like I said, we haven't gotten far enough along in that, but that's one of the areas we'll be looking at.
Okay.
Other questions? Commissioner Nacita?
Your discussion, Nancy, about the fact that there may be other properties in the future as time goes on, I, looking through this resolution text, I am, one, I'm interested in amending this because it does not make mention in the first resolution about the city manager and the city attorney coming to the city commission to approve future takings. And I want to see if we can amend either Section Three and/or Four before we, you know, launch into this, I want to make sure that future...
You always are.
Targeted properties would, would come back to the city.
You have to.
If you're gonna take the property by condemnation, we have to come back and get authorization to file the suit. If there's a negotiated settlement, that may be a different thing, if you want that to come before you, that's a different issue. But normally, when we buy right-of-way, it's generally done at the staff level, only if it gets controversial or if we have to go for a lawsuit to acquire the property, do we come back to the commission.
Okay. So, and for example, with the Union Pacific Railroad?
Yes.
That appears to be negotiated?
It is negotiated, but railroads are a special issue, because you really can't condemn them because of some federal authority, you've gotta go, you really do, you've gotta go and make peace with the railroad in order to acquire the property, and they've got a consent. And that's, what they do is to require an agreement of the nature that you have before you in order for them to give up any of their property or rights in their property, so that's why that's on the agenda.
Okay. So, under the text here?
Yes.
The city commission seems to be authorizing condemnation proceedings to be negotiated without the negotiated amount coming back to us for approval?
Again, let me, if you actually do go to condemnation, the lawsuit itself has to be approved by the commission, and you have to approve the amount that's offered in advance of a lawsuit. If it is negotiated normally, and you have lots of these things where the city buys right-of-way or other property, normally it's done at the staff level. If you want to pull this up, then that's an issue for the commission to decide, and you can do that, but you're not required to do that.
Okay. I would look to do that, and I would move that we amend Resolution...
But we don't have a motion on the floor yet, so why don't you wait till we finish the staff report and then take each one individually, if you would, please?
Oh, okay, I didn't know that.
We don't have a motion on the floor, and the staff report isn't concluded.
I didn't know the staff report was not concluded.
Yeah, she's just finished the first one.
Okay.
So, thank you.
And the next of the three items relating to the Highway 213 project is indeed what Commissioner Nacita was referring to, and that is the agreement with Union Pacific Railroad for right-of-way that we are purchasing from them, and it ended up being larger than had been anticipated in the original amount, but we didn't have any choice, they said, if you want that, you take that to there. And that's okay, because we can use land down there to do some vegetation, it can be nothing but better for the project to have additional land down there. So, the other thing where, we brought this to you in May and showed you the agreement and its form, and we also advised you of the price and, per square foot, and then we had to go back and finalize the actual value, which got valued at about approximately $622,000. And that final value was based on us delineating wetlands because the wetlands had a different per square foot value than the rest of the property, it was much less for the wetlands. So, that is, that agreement now has been completed in terms of filling in the blanks, and we're here to ask for your approval on that. And then, the third item is the local agency agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation, ODOT. This is essentially, you've seen many of these memorandum of understanding, local agency agreements, intergovernmental agreements, it, it essentially describes the project, and it defines the responsibilities of the two parties, in this case, ODOT and the City of Oregon City, in completing the preliminary engineering for the project. And what this agreement then allows ODOT to do is to obligate the federal funding that we've received for the Highway 213 corridor, and in this case, they'll be, it's timely to obligate the $500,000 that we got from Congressman, Congresswoman Darlene Houli several, several years ago now.
My gosh, five?
Yes.
Five, maybe?
Yes, I think it is five, because we're down to the, it's important to do so. And the one thing I wanted to say for this one, if I can...
We have additions and deletions?
Yes.
Page at our table?
Yes. This is, requires some timely action, and there are some, what we believe to be minor additions and deletions that I left at your, or Nancy, I left at your places this evening. We tried to make it as easy as possible for you to see what was added, that's in yellow underlined, and what was taken away. The overall, the overall meaning of the paragraphs that had deletions or additions, in my opinion, didn't change, these are mostly for clarification, and... The other thing it did was it changed out the map. Now, the map, rather than just showing a line on Highway 213, it also shows the other roadway improvements that will be made as part of the project. It includes portions of Redland Road, portions of Washington Street, portions of Clackamas River Drive.
Okay, so, these, these are essentially for clarity, I know there's a date change, I see.
Yes.
Oh, that's because of the money?
Yeah, and, and because they changed their, how their directors, yeah, the delegation authority.
There, do you have any comments? Okay.
When you're ready to vote on the first one, there is a request along the lines of the commission to see that drafted somewhere.
Okay, great. Any questions then on this one? Nancy, will you finish?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Okay. Then, if there aren't questions on the specifics, then let's go back to number one, which is item six C, D, six D, which is the one that authorizes the institution of condemnation proceedings as necessary, but begins the negotiation process.
If I may, before your motion is recorded?
Sure. Mr. Neely?
I don't, I don't particularly object to Jim Nacita's motion on this particular one, I'm concerned, however, about a precedent, and I want to say why. Nancy, how many, how much, how many property owners did we have to see right-of-way when we put in the Beaver Creek Road from?
I think there were about 16.
16.
Approximately.
And how easy of a process was that to go through in terms of negotiating the 16 property owners?
It's complicated.
It's very complicated. And my concern, it wasn't so much with us, we only had two property owners involved, my concern is the precedent it sets, and frankly, when you get into multiple property owners like we will, again, on, I'm sure, projects that become, become before us, I personally, as a commissioner, would not want to weigh in on decisions that involve so many property owners, the negotiated settlements are very complicated, I don't recall whether we had to do condemnation procedures on any of those.
We did.
I thought so. And, and I probably won't support the motion simply because of a precedent it sets, I think there's the expectation we'll do this all the time, and quite frankly, it's, it's not an easy process for staff to go through.
We do, just for your benefit, Commissioner Nacita, because I know you probably haven't been through one of these large projects yet, but we spend some executive sessions informing the commission about when we've gotten the appraisals completed, what the initial, the initial offer would be, what we recommend, and then as we move forward, tip, many, many times, they just get squared away, it's no problem.
Yes.
Many, many times, as Commissioner Neely mentioned, we do end up in mediation, and we, the city attorney's office keeps the commission updated on the proceedings, and sometimes the last, the last meeting, we make judgment calls in terms of how far we'll go with our final offer, I mean, the final offer. But even that, before we sign the papers, we have to come back and get commission authority because we're spending city money. So, we do have a fairly, pretty good process for keeping you informed.
Okay. I, I'm still interested in making a motion to the effect, and I think I can address Commissioner Neely's concern by offering the opinion that while there may be many, they can be done in batches, for example. It's not a one-at-a-time kind of thing, there can be presentation on settlement price proposals done in a memo with several properties listed at once, and I don't think that would be particularly problematic from a logistical standpoint. So, I would still like to make the motion, I don't care how, if I don't get a second, that's fine, but I'd still like to make the motion.
Okay, may I have a motion for on...
I'd like to see what Mr. Sullivan has as far as language.
Well, we do not have a motion on the floor to amend, to amend.
I can't move to amend until I see that, have the language with which to make the motion to amend.
He could make a motion, he could include his amendment, which is not an amendment, he can make it as an individual.
Yeah, so it doesn't need to be an amendment, it can just be a changing of the original, yeah. If you do it prior to the motion, then that's possible.
You don't have me...
You're not amending anything, you'll be making a motion that includes his language.
I'm making a motion to amend the proposed resolution.
Okay, then, that's a different thing, then we need a motion on the floor first.
Okay, I just want to get clear on what you both were talking about.
You could put, you could put a motion, you could put forward the motion that includes your desired language.
Into.
Without an amendment. Don't call it an amendment if we're gonna do that, otherwise, we have to make another motion, and then you get to amend it.
However...
So, you're suggesting someone makes a motion to approve this, and then second it?
No, no, there's, there's two ways, two ways to do it, but I prefer one of them, so may I suggest that we do it as an amendment, because it sounds like we may have some discussion on the amendment.
In that case...
So, may we put a motion on the floor, please?
Let me, let me add one point of clarification, because we may be overworking this issue. I am trying to think if we have ever purchased right-of-way that we have not brought to the commission.
I can't think of it either.
I can't think of it either.
I can't either.
I think they need to approve right-of-way.
Even if you didn't acquire it, I think you've already done it.
Well, it's land acquisition, it's basically what it is, so you're personing, I suppose, if there was a small sliver, but...
I think, I think we've always...
I don't know in any city I've ever done that, but I don't know.
I don't, I think that gets...
Yeah, I'm gonna...
Commissioner Neely?
I'm gonna move a resolution declaring the necessity and intent to appropriate real property and authorizing institution condemnation proceedings if necessary.
Second.
For the Redland, for the, for the I-205 Redland Road Plaza.
Could we also add the Resolution Number 9-33, 23?
Yes, we can.
Thank you.
And second.
Moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner West. Now for discussion, Commissioner Nacita.
Okay. Now, may I make the motion to amend at this point?
This is appropriate.
Okay. I would like to move that we amend Resolution 09-23 to require that the city manager obtain approval of the city commission as to the purchase price of each property, and I'll ask for...
Here's the language I would use, in Section Three, at the very end of the section, I would add, "All land acquired by negotiated purchase under this resolution shall be approved by the city commission."
Since we do it anyway, I'll second it. Would you the amendment first, right?
Yes, yes, the amendment first.
I second the amendment.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Nacita, seconded by Commissioner Neely, that the, that of Section Three be amended to, say, "All land acquired shall be approved by the city commission." There, a discussion?
Wait, wait, wait.
So, can I vote yes and no?
We will vote twice. There, yeah, we will...
You can vote yes on the amendment.
Mr. Sullivan, could you repeat your language, please?
There will be two motions. First, we'll vote on the amendment, and any other amendments that might happen, and then we will vote on the final motion at the end. Mr. Sullivan.
I think Commissioner Nocita asked me to reread.
Yes, please.
All right, it's at the end of section three.
Right.
And it would say, "All land acquired by negotiated purchase under this resolution shall be approved by the city commission." And the way I did that is because if it's going to be condemnation, it's got to come back anyway. And those are the only two ways that I know of.
Okay, so, your, your language would cover instances where there are negotiated settlements that don't reach condemnation?
That is correct.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay. I guess I just need assurances from staff that, is this any different than current practice? Okay.
No.
That's fine.
Yeah, no, I just needed assurance of that.
Now you lost...
Commissioner West.
Excuse me, now you lost me on this amendment. So, the amendment is no different than what we already do?
The practice. It just, it just puts practice into the language. So, yeah. Is there further discussion?
I thought the original is what the current practice was.
Well...
The city attorney said that we are apparently doing something that we do not have to do under statute. We do it anyway. And all we're doing is...
The resolution right now is silent on the issue.
So, this puts it into the resolution, which is our practice, and so therefore doesn't change our behavior.
Okay.
So, is there a further discussion on the amendment? So, first we'll vote on the amendment, and then the, then the motion will include the amendment if approved. If not, it will be just the original motion. So, then, the amendment only, does it need to be read again?
No.
Okay. Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner West?
No.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
I'm sorry I didn't hear you.
Aye.
And Mayor Norris?
No. You know, I'm going to change my vote. I'm going to vote yes on that. Oh, we do already, so...
Actually, I don't think, it's what we do already, what we're doing is essentially codifying it.
Codifying it, yeah. I'm, I'm okay with that.
A given resolution, I don't think it's a possibility.
So, motion passes three, two.
Let me add for clarification, too, so, because I think this is where we, you know, practice and...
We're going to have sixteen properties.
Again, because of a process like this, depending on what you're paying for, again, you have to appropriate money in the budget, it has to be spelled out. We go through all of this stuff, so you have that information to go down. You can do it this way, it's really, it's, it's a non-issue, it is overkill and overworking an issue, but if that makes you comfortable, we're more than happy to go in that direction.
Okay, now, let's move on to the next one. And that is...
We haven't voted.
Oh, pardon me, pardon me, yes. As I've said several times, okay. Now, resolution nine dash twenty-three now includes the amendment.
That's right, so...
So, we are voting now on the, the original resolution plus the amendment, which is now attached to it, so it's a package.
Wait, wait, no.
Got it? Any time to think?
Yes.
Okay. I'm since I'm first.
Okay. You ready for the...
You gotta wait for her to call you first.
All right, Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner West?
I guess aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes five, zero. Now, we'll move on to the next one, which is the Union...
We like more work.
Well, that's not, that's not going to be no work.
Apparently it's not really creative work, we do it anyway.
And that's the reason I voted for it, because it's current practice.
I was surprised that we haven't, because I think we've always approved all expenditures for land acquisition.
We have.
That's what we have there.
Okay. Next is the property acquisition from Union Pacific Railroad. Is there further comment on this one? This is agenda item six E. This is the closing documents for that acquisition in the amount of approximately $622,000. May I have a motion, please? Commissioner West?
I move to authorize the city manager to execute, execute the closing documents to acquire property from the Union Pacific Railroad as agreed upon through the letter agreement with the UPRR for the Oregon 213 I-205 Redland Road Crossing in Oregon City project.
Second. Moved by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Is there further comment or discussion? Seeing none, Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes five, zero.
May I ask a question after this?
Commissioner Neely.
I'm a little bit confused where this property that the Union Pacific has is.
This, this is the area north of Stein Oil, between the railroad and Stein Oil, on the east side of 213.
I'm just curious why we're calling it the 213...
Redland?
I-205 Redland Road Crossing.
It's the way ODOT does their, that's how they do titles. They do the, the title of the main road that you're working on, and then they do the to terminate. So, it's Oregon 213 I-205 to Redland Road Overcrossing.
It's because they said so.
Okay.
That's, that's their...
Or commonly known, or commonly known as the jug handle.
What I want to make sure is, the first, the motion that we, the motion that we just passed.
Yes.
However, did imply to really the Redland Crossing with 213.
Yes, this is also...
Okay, very good, okay. I just wanted to make sure.
That is Redland O...
And what we're talking about here, it deals more with Washington Street and 213.
Yes, Red, but the, that's the title of the project now, is I-205 to Redland Oxing Overcrossing.
Okay.
Good, that's a good clarification. Okay, this, this is a...
That should be a title.
This is the railroad property. So, any further comment or discussion? Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes five, zero. Now, the third one is item six F, and this is the agreement between ODOT and the City of Oregon City that establishes the agreement terms for the funding and design of the same project, the Jug Handle project. May I have a motion, please?
I move to approve the local agency agreement number twenty-five zero seven four between Oregon Department of Transportation and Oregon City that establishes agreement terms for the funding and design of OR 213 I-205 Redland Road Oxing, Oregon City Project. Oxing, thank you.
Crossing.
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 Thank you, Commissioner Smith. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Neely. Further comment or discussion? Seeing none, Nancy, please take the vote.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes five, zero. Yeah, that takes care of Redland Road and I-205 213. So, next, moving on to another very important summer particularly project, a contract award for the pavement rehabilitation project. Nancy, staff, please. Staff report, please.
Thank you again. This is your pavement management utility fee, paving contract for the year, and we had the set of contract documents done by an engineering consultant and put it out to bid in July. The segments being completed, the, the map in your packet has got a little skewed, I think, by the computer. It's kind of funny. But you guys know the part of town we're talking about, and there's actually a list that I have. There's some sections of Molalla Avenue, there's a very long stretch on Center Street, there's portions of Warner Parrot Road, there are portions of Division Street, and there are portions of Fifteenth Street and Third Avenue and Hedges. These are remnant from some of the utility work we did in Kenema last summer. John Lewis prepared the staff report, and he included all the details about how many square yards of milling and how many tons of asphalt, et cetera. So, you have a good idea of what all's been getting, what all's getting done. And the bids came in with a fairly narrow range between $382,000 and $411,000. And Brick's Paving Company was the successful bidder with the bid of $382,741. Detail there. So, anyway, if you have any questions about it, both John and Jim Birch are here, if you have questions about the paving program for the summer, or I can answer questions as well.
Yes, questions. Commissioner Neely.
Well, the first one is, the question asked before the mobilization, I believe, was the, we've had experience with them before? Oh, excuse me, that's not what I meant to ask.
It's Brick's Paving.
Among the groups. Portland...
It's Brick's Paving.
Brick's.
Brick's Paving, I was on the wrong page.
Yep.
Brick's Paving, again, have we had experience with them before?
I personally don't, but I'm looking at John and Jim, and they say we have, and it's been successful.
Okay. The next question I have, when we, when we pass the street maintenance utility fee...
Pavement.
Street pavement, ma, pavement maintenance. When we pay, when we pass that, when we pass that particular fee, I, my recollection is we had a indication of roads that needed to be done, we, with darker colors and so forth, we got indications of which ones were the greater priority, am I correct?
Mm-hmm.
And I assume that this listing is coming from those kinds of maps that we had seen earlier on, is that correct?
Yes, they are. There's a small portion of Central Point Road, which was not on the list, but given the fact we're doing Warner Parrot at that intersection, and the section of Central Point Road is, needs, needs to be rehabilitated, we combined that.
So, this, this really corresponds to priorities that have been set in the past that, that really essentially went into effect.
That's right, and those priorities were based on our pavement management program as well as field work by staff. But that was a map that was assembled when we were passing the new utility, and we are using that as a tool.
Thank you.
Commissioner West?
And also includes, we probably can do more because of the savings we did with the, was it on South End Road a couple weeks ago that we were talking about?
Yes, and actually...
Does that allow us to do a little more?
This bid was a good bid, and it will enable us to do a little bit more on Molalla Avenue.
Oh, right.
And unless John wants, or Jim decides, they, they informed me that we would probably, because we budgeted a bit more than this, so we might use some of that on Molalla Avenue.
And I'm assuming this is the year's budget for it, for what we collect for the first year?
Yes, yes.
And is it come from any other funds?
Just not, this, no. This is strictly the pavement management utility fund.
And that was, in fact, I think we designate, this was supposed to be used only for that, not sidewalks, just pavement management.
Right, curb to curb.
So, may I, may I just ask about the state of the industry, then? Do you attribute this, you said it was a good contract. Are contract prices coming down for this kind of pavement work?
Well, we, I, it seemed like the, where we, where we saw some savings was about a Our asphalt cost estimate was about $10 higher than what it came in at. So, that added up to being, leaving to the point where we didn't spend our entire budget. I think that our asphalt cost estimate was pretty conservative because we were worried about asphalt prices. And so, the good news is asphalt prices aren't quite as high as we thought they might be, but they're still high. I think it was still $75 a ton, which is a lot higher than it was a few years ago. So...
Petroleum product.
Yeah.
Okay. Any further questions? Oh, yes. Commissioner West, new motion?
Oh, okay, I was going to, yeah, make a motion.
I was going to make a comment.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Neely?
The comment is, I didn't want any confusion, she mentioned the use of asphalt. Brick's Paving Company does not use bricks, it's spelled B-R-I-X.
Oh, gosh. Thank you, thank you so much for the clarification.
Yes.
Okay, now, Commissioner West, that one, yes.
On that note, on that hard surface, I move, I move to authorize the city manager to execute a public improvement contract in the amount of $382,741 and $0.40 to Brick's Paving for the 2009 pavement rehabilitation project.
Thank you.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Smith, who I heard first. Is there any further comment or discussion?
Only because he was closer to you.
That's right, exactly.
Well, there's benefits.
The difference was the speed of light.
Nancy, the vote.
Speed of sound.
Speed of sound.
Now, let's see, what did that wave phone say?
I'm kind of mummy this morning.
We might need to have a break for you.
We thought you were going to whiskey.
Order in the court.
I'm both Democratic, too.
Now that we can focus back on business, Nancy, would you take the vote, please?
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes five, zero. Next, another Public Works project, and that is our 2009 Slurry Seal Project. Nancy, please listen about that.
This is, Mayor and Commissioners, this is another component of your pavement management utility fund, and the types of pavement preservation that we'll be achieving with that funding. This is probably one of the first treatments other than crack sealing. Crack sealing is what you've seen our crews out doing in the last couple months to prepare for some of these slurry ceilings. But what this does is, for, for roads that might be eight years, 10 years, 15 years old, and they start to, they, they kind of start, look like they dry up, and they might start cracking on the top, they might look like water could start getting in, and they've lost that nice tight seal that the asphalt provides. And if we allow the water to get in and don't seal them up, then the water gets in the subgrade, and it basically causes the pavement to fail. And so, what we do is we put down a fine layer of aggregate Portland cement and emulsified asphalt, and then that enables us to see a good 10 to 15, 12 to 18 years, which, it reconditions the 12 to 18-year-old pavements, and you get an additional life of five to seven years out of them. So, this is a good, very reasonably priced, this is a very good investment to extend the life of your pavement. And we got two bids on this, we publicly bid the project, and this is going to apply about 81,500 square yards of slurry seal application. And the bids were very close, but the low bid goes to Black Line Inc., and they were, they had a responsible bid of $82,688.
Any questions about this project? If not, a motion, please. Commissioner West?
Sorry, one more question. So, what, this, I'm, I kind of thought the city did their own slurry seal, I guess I was mistaken.
We do crack sealing, which is, you see the wand out there sealing the cracks. We do not have slurry sealing equipment. Last year, we contracted with the county to do some chip sealing on Myers Road, but we do not do this particular kind of work.
Okay.
This, this--
Commissioner Neely?
She's bringing up kind of a point that comes up periodically, to what degree would it be beneficial for Public Works to do it, to what degree would it be beneficial to contract this kind of work out? I think your experience is, is best to contract this kind of work out.
I think so, especially given the size of the crews you'd need, the traffic control. We have plenty of work to do in the summer as it is, and when you look at the annual contract value here to get geared up with all the equipment and probably more seasonal staff, this is a preferential way to go.
In fact, do we have equipment that could do it?
No.
That's what I thought.
That's the point, whether the investment would be worth it at all.
Okay, now, Commissioner West.
I guess I'm making a motion to authorize the city manager to execute a public improvement contract in the amount of $82,688 to Black Line Inc. for the 2009 Oregon City Slurry Seal Project.
Second.
Not to be confused with a chip seal or a crack seal.
Okay, you said you'd guess, is that a motion?
I, this is a motion to authorize--
But the guess isn't in it.
All right, moved by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Is there further discussion on this motion? Not Nancy, please poll the Commissioners.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nacita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye, motion passes five, zero. Next item is--
Mayor Norris, could I just, I know that one of the Commissioners had asked about notifying, it was Commissioner West, for the water lines. We don't unless we're shutting their water off during the process, but these pavement projects, we do a much more extensive effort to notify people, especially if they're not going to be able to drive on their road that day, et cetera. And you'll see Jim Birch riding around on his bicycle, trying to direct traffic, and try to make sure the public is, I mean, they will be inconvenienced, but we would rather they didn't do so in an angry manner.
And you do have the schedule up on, you have the schedule and the expected dates up on the website.
We will have it upset up, yes.
When we're ready.
And we've put signs up in the neighborhood as well.
Yeah, the web, the website is really a wonderful place for information for the public, so it's great to keep it up to date. All right, now, the last, well, the next resolution is 9-24, which is to extend the Comcast franchise to October 31st of this year. Who is doing the staff report on that? Nancy?
Aye. Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, this item is a request for your approval for this resolution to extend the Comcast franchise agreement to October 31, 2009, and it had expired in May of this year. The city has been working with Comcast, negotiating a new agreement for the past few months along with our franchise attorney, Barry Elsner and Hammond. We are well on our way to an agreement and expect to bring the renewal ordinance to you later this fall, and to protect the city's receipt of its franchise fees and to expedite the process, we're asking that you approve the, a formal resolution extending the franchise to October 31st.
Wait, thank you, may I have a motion for this, on this resolution, please?
Move approval of Resolution 0924 to extend the Comcast franchise agreement to October 1, 2009.
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one, 2009.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner Nacita. Is there further comment? Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nacita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
And Mayor Norris.
Aye, motion passes five, zero. And the last item of business are the minutes for June 9th, our work session. May I have a motion for the adoption of the minutes?
Move approval.
And a second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Smith on the minutes. Assume that means someone wasn't there.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, it does. Okay, Commissioner, Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner West? Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nacita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Looks like I abstained.
And Mayor Norris?
Aye, motion passes four, zero with one abstention. And the last item on the business agenda is a discussion of the urban reserves that brought up by Commissioner Neely, and we have a piece of information on our desk.
May I, first of all, I indicated that I would be submitting this at the last commission meeting, it should not have been a surprise. I do want to state that before I do this, I'm going to ask for your permission to give my report on the Urban Reserve, County Reserve Policy Advisory Committee meeting of last night, because I think is very relevant to this.
It's fine.
We had, we had three, we had three different urban reserve areas to consider for designation before this Policy Advisory Committee. One of them is designated U6, and it is the area basically around Holly Lane, Maple Lane area.
You should have a series of maps.
Yeah, we do.
The first map shows those four.
Mill Creek Canyon area.
The next one is U8, this is Beaver Creek, and the third one is the area around Clackamas Heights.
U9.
U9, excuse me, what did I say?
You didn't say.
Oh, excuse me. Those were the three, those were the three urban, urban reserve study areas to be indicated for evaluation. What I'm going to do is I'm going to indicate that the majority of the people approve the, for the most part, the urban reserve designation in the Maple Lane, Holly Lane area.
With these boundaries, exactly?
Not with these boundaries, exactly. I'll read, actually, the designation. Designate close-in flatter areas, including around Holly Lane Urban Reserve.
This is on the U6 now, Doc?
This is U6.
This is U6.
Okay.
And the majority, 12 voted that. Nine designate the entire area as an urban reserve, except natural features. Minority three designate entire area as urban reserve. Minority three do not designate any as urban reserve. What I should indicate to you, I'm calling this a vote, we call, this actually called a poll, various options are put forward, the members of this Policy Advisor Committee can vote on multiple options, it's not a one or the other, and I just want to indicate what the process was. But basically, the, most of the proposed urban reserve area was recommended to come in. I want to talk about now the Beaver Creek area.
Could I just ask a question about that? Because, so, the entire area of U6, the boundary as drawn here--
Mm-hmm. Was not, was not, was not the vote. It was designate close-in flatter areas, including around Holly Lane, as urban reserve.
That was the majority vote?
That was the majority.
On the U6, okay.
On the U6.
And then, the next one?
You want me to summarize the others before you hit that?
Yes.
Go ahead, sure.
Okay.
So, and the next one was U7, on the southwest part of Oregon.
That's right, excuse me, pardon, that's right.
And that, that area, I would say the majority of that was not recommended, the only part that was recommended was the extension of South End Road towards New Era where there's some flatter areas, so that's a, I'd say that's probably maybe 20 to 30 percent of that area.
Was, was it?
Was.
Let me, let me say what the stated statement is, is majority of 14, only designate bench areas as urban reserves is what the statement is.
And that's what--
So it's not all on South End Road, it's--
The flatter, the flatter areas.
Yeah, that's right.
And then, U9 was Clackamas Heights, the committee, they had five different options for that, with the votes kind of all over the board on that, but I think the consensus was to bring in the northern area, the more flatter area, again, there was a real focus on bringing in the flat areas and trying to stay away from the natural features, and--
That, no, that isn't it.
What, sorry?
The vote is designate close-in areas as urban reserve. Do not designate, this is, this is, this is the ranked one, I'll get the votes here, all close. Do not designate any urban reserve. Designate entire urban area reserve except Clackamas River drainage. Designate flatter areas along roads as urban reserve, that was actually at the bottom, more at the bottom, and designate flatter areas in the north as urban reserve. So the majority said designate close-in areas as urban reserve. For the most part, that, that was a area of the map that the actual city designated, I think, and so that pretty well corresponded to the city's designation.
Okay.
I think that the difficulty here is going to be for the county staff to, the split votes with multiple options, and that will be coming back to the committee probably in two weeks, I would think.
I would guess so. Yeah, it should, we've got a meeting scheduled.
Yeah.
Okay. In any case, those three did not deviate greatly in the options chosen from what the city's recommended, recommended study area would be. And it should be pointed out, this was intended to be a study area that would work up conflicts between urban reserves and rural reserves. A given area could have been both designated as a designated area for study, both as a rural reserve and as an urban reserve. Beaver Creek.
Which is?
The majority.
U8.
U8. Majority vote, and it was a strong majority. Do not designate any urban reserve. I'm going to give you an opinion as to why this probably happened. I'm just an only in a team. Those maps were produced and indicated, particularly in the case of this particular area, because it was substantially larger than another area that a internal discussion within the group had identified earlier, this came in as a city recommendation. A lot of people there intermed with that as our city aspiration. I think that's what happened. There were several, there were several options, I'm going to read the options, and then I'm going to, I actually put two of them forward because I knew there'd be problems with this one. Do not designate any urban reserve. Eight voted for that, or polled for that. Designate as urban reserve the area north and northeast of the Beaver Creek drainage system. Four. Designate urban reserve in close-in areas and Highway 213 corridor excluding the Parrot Creek drainage area. Four. Exclude Parrot Creek. Three. Designate as urban reserve the area along 213 and the Beaver Creek watershed. Three. I'm just a little confused. No, that's correct. Two of those options I put forward, and I'll say why, two, only two of them that I actually polled against. The urban, the U8 area was, where I mentioned exclude Parrot Creek watershed from consideration as urban reserve. This particular designation of U8 completely excluded the Abernathy Creek watershed, that was out. It extended, it extended down through the Beaver Creek watershed and caught part of the Parrot Creek watershed, and that part of the Parrot Creek watershed that it included did include some foundation fireworks. And for that reason, I recommended its exclusion.
Weren't they important?
Huh?
They were, weren't they the middle category important?
I believe so.
Yeah, I don't think we have foundation.
Yeah, there weren't any foundations.
Yeah, yeah, I was in the middle area.
Pardon?
Yes, it was, it was not, it was not in the conflicted category, that's right.
It's conflicted, important, and foundation.
Yeah.
So middle category is called--
Middle, okay, that's awesome.
It was an important area, thank you. The, the other one I put forward as an option for consideration is to designate urban reserve in close areas and the Highway 213 corridor excluding the Parrot Creek drainage system. This is an area that was looked at as potential, as potential employment land. The point is, they ended up not designating any as urban reserve, and I think the reason that happened, frankly, is when it was indicated this was the city's recommendation for consideration for a study area, that it got attributed by several people there as an aspiration of this thing. And--
Even when you mentioned it wasn't?
Well, we had that discussion there, I mean, discussion, actually several mentioned, but by that point, I think that I would say.
So, so the boundary, if this were to prevail, then that means that, I'm just, again, concerned with the boundary, then would remain where the urban growth boundary is today?
That's correct.
Okay.
And should this, first of all, I don't think this is going to pass the county commission. I don't, I mean, I think they're going to push it back to us.
I think so, too.
But we had several municipalities gave their aspirations before the process, we have not done so. This is what they saw from Oregon City, said nothing about our aspirations. And I think, I think that hurts.
No, I agree.
I had indicated here a draft sense of a commission motion, not suggesting this would be a resolution, anything so formal, for one thing. I don't think we can have a resolution on something like this. Unfortunately, it's a draft because it's a draft sense of Oregon City Commission motion on possible extension of, I wrote rural, I meant urban, reserve designation south of Oregon City.
Let's see, here we are.
But it's a draft. And if I may, I'd like to--
Do you vote Democrat and drink whiskey?
Yeah, yeah, but not, yeah, but not necessarily in that order.
All right, yep. Because I'm unsure about what your motion is.
Well, it's stated here.
Okay.
Yet the decision to extend urban growth reserve designation in area U8 beyond the Oregon City fringe, extending east of the Caulfield Creek Basin, and beyond an area south of Oregon City, extending on both sides of Highway 213 as indicated on rural reserve map E, which I don't think you had before, and it's also on F. And the sense of the Oregon City Commission is that such an extended area should not be brought into the urban growth boundary of Oregon City within the 50-year timeframe of the urban reserve boundary being established. Rather, a new municipal government be established, that should be in there, be established around the community of Beaver Creek, oh, no, no, I meant it the way it was written, excuse me. Rather, a new municipal government established around the community of Beaver Creek should ultimately serve such an extended area. The city of Oregon City and the community of Beaver Creek have distinct senses of place. Oregon City's sense of place centers around its being the first-chartered United States City west of the Mississippi, its location at Willamette Falls at the confluence of the river with the Willamette River, and its associated history as the earliest center of immigration governance and associated industrial and residential development in the Oregon Territory. Beaver Creek's sense of location is based on its rural character and identity. If the extended building is, if the extended area is to be urbanized, it should be done by its own residents in a matter consistent with how they feel their own land use policies should accommodate urban agriculture, and how their own city should provide urban services to its residents and to the rural population surrounding that community.
So, does this come from Beaver Creek asking to have its own--
No, this is my statement. This is the aspirations that I'm expressing as a Commissioner.
How can we aspire for the community of Beaver Creek?
If it comes, if it comes, if it is designated as, it states, if it's designated as an urban reserve, if that area is designated as an urban reserve, then we do not want to be the urban service provider. If that whole area is designated as a urban reserve, then we do not want to be the service provider.
Are we talking about this at our work session?
Well, that, we had been on a track of discussing this with the planning commission in a work session.
Well, actually, I brought this concept up at the last work session.
Yeah, yeah, I think you've taken it a step further, but--
Yeah.
Yeah.
So are we, do we have a meeting scheduled?
When is, the next work session is August--
Tuesday.
Tuesday, and that's, and the planning commission is coming?
Uh, we haven't discussed that.
Oh, I thought that's what you just said.
Well, I say that, I think that would be wise, but I--
Oh, okay.
I was waiting for direction based on tonight.
Okay, Commissioner Nacita.
I support this, Commissioner Neely, I'm unclear on what you're asking us to do with it.
Me, too.
If you want to have it as a resolution, I'm perfectly willing to vote yes on it as a resolution, but I need guidance from you on what you're asking us to do tonight.
Resolution is something that we're resolving to do that we, in some ways, may not have that much control over.
Can be changed.
For one thing, for one thing, it has not been designated as an urban reserve at all yet, I mean, that hasn't happened. This is a what-if situation. I'm suggesting something more informal, I could seek the attorney's guidance on what this would be, but a resolution is a rather formal statement.
You know, it's really up to you, even the resolution would not be, you know, a mortal sin on this--
Oh, well, I was concerned about that.
You can do it, and it expresses a policy direction of the city. If you wanted to do it by any other means, you can do it. You're not doing an ordinance, you're not doing anything that's formal commitment to completed policy. So you can do a sense of the commission, you can do a resolution, you can do an authorization that the mayor or the city manager sign something on your behalf and send it to this Metro Committee. There's just no form.
The point I'm making is, we have no aspirations to deal with this issue, and I think we need aspirations to deal with this issue. I point out time and time again, we are pulling in, into the city areas that do not have a sense of identity with the city. We've seen that on numerous occasions in terms of the distribution of votes on money issues, portion last year passed, but we've had several before where the older precincts have voted in, and the newer precincts-- have voted in, and the newer precincts have voted a solid majority against, which, which threw out the money issues. And the further we extend away from the core area of Oregon City, the more that sense of identity is lost. And if we looked at all of urban, if we looked at all of U-8, if we would, I think we would find that this even becomes worse. There was a big crowd from Beaver Creek that was there. There was a huge list of people that signed the petition at the farmer's market. They don't want to be part of Oregon City. And frankly, if this is all we have before anybody, they believe this is our aspiration.
Um, I guess, I never believed that we would do all of it. That was my, that wasn't, that wasn't my view. I guess what I was hoping that as the county studied it, that there might be some pieces there that would support the Beaver Creek Concept Plan because that is a jobs, supposed to be a jobs-producing area, and that to have more development around that, I thought, was probably prudent. I never saw it as a, as this piece, and it's hard to tell where Beaver Creek actually is on here too.
You can see it, you can see, I think you see the road, you see Beaver Creek, and you see the, you see that...
Which map are you in? Because I don't see Beaver Creek. We don't have that one.
You should have a map that says Map 10 on it, towards the back.
Now, you can, yeah, you see, you see how big that is compared to the current city of Oregon City.
Which map are we looking at? The one you were...
U-8.
Okay.
You'll see where Beaver Creek extends on, and then you make that...
So where's the, is it the...
Beaver Creek's the intersection Cameron and Beaver Creek, and I guess...
Is it right, is it here?
Right here. Crossroad right here is that place where you, where you have the restaurant and so forth.
Yeah.
Slum, whatever it is.
This one or this one?
This one.
That's on 213?
Mm-hmm.
No, it's not on 213, it's Beaver Creek.
No, it is Beaver Creek Road and Cameron. And Cameron, yeah.
I got the wrong one. Excuse me.
I thought it was right.
I got the wrong one.
So there's no turn there?
It's this area, this spot right here where you got that abrupt right turn, election.
That's the second one out.
Yeah, second one out. This?
That's Beaver Creek.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
The commission can do what it chooses on this item, but I, as I recall your last discussion, I could be wrong, you can help me, with the planning commission, I, and I know this point was brought up, seemed like there was quite a bit of differing viewpoints, I'll say, in regards to that issue. I guess you might want to think, again, is this something that you're going to direct to the commission, or do you really want the planning commission involved in that? Because I guess if I was on the planning commission, I'd voiced a different opinion, and you go a different direction, I might be a little upset.
I've got no problem with the planning commission.
It's a process question how you want to deal with it.
I disagree with the sense, the only, the only verbiage that I recall was from Tim Powell, when he was saying, "Well, I don't want to pay, pay for any of that infrastructure." Oregon City, that's the only...
I don't recall all the discussion. It seemed like there was, that discussion was a little bit all over the board there, so I don't know where the consensus lies with all of you. It's, if you want to go a different direction, that's fine, but...
I have no problem with the planning commission looking at this.
Yeah.
But I don't think we, I, we have, we have to leave the charge on this. Well, bringing the counties and identifying some, some employment lands and so forth.
I'm just raising a process question here, where you want to go.
I'm frankly, frankly think the sense of the community there is so strong, right now you've got the majority of the people, majority of the people that are on that Park Policy Advisory Committee are not from Beaver Creek. Okay? One there, Beaver Creek.
Yeah, I know, yeah, no, I know.
But this came forward as the staff's recommendation of an area to study, and I understand that, and I presented it that way. The fact it was coming from Oregon City, the fact they've gone through these battles twice there, the fact that we've lost court battles twice there when the attempt was made to, well, once there, I guess, when the attempt was made to, to extend the urban growth boundary the first time, in fact, I think the whole thing was thrown out.
Twenty years ago.
Twenty years ago, that's right. The next time around, we, we had a recommendation that was actually kicked out by Metro itself, by IMPACT, where we extended the growth boundary beyond, recommended, beyond Enrisey Road. That was kicked out by IMPACT.
Of course, that's a UGB discussion. That's a 20-year framework. This is a 50-year.
Yeah, that's a 50-year. I understand that this is a 50-year one. Majority of people don't want to be a part of that picture down in Beaver Creek.
Well, it's an important distinction.
Yeah, no, I understand that. That is an important distinction. The question to us, maybe this does become all designated urban reserve over the next 50 years. From my perspective at this point, I do not want to take in a sizable chunk of territory with an angry population that doesn't want to become part of Oregon City. I think if it's going to become urban, they need to chart their own, they need to chart their own future. I think they feel the same way.
But remember, this doesn't, if it gets designated urban reserve, that's a 50-year timeline.
I know what it is.
And it doesn't mean that it gets urbanized.
I understand that.
It may not get urbanized for 50 or 60 years.
I understand that.
Yeah.
It depends, that's going to be how people view Oregon City. I know how Rocky expressed it very well. But Oregon City was there, that's what Oregon City is to me. And frankly, I think we have the right to chart our own future too.
Right, I guess the only thing that we looked at was, this is, we, I think we understand there's a lot of politics involved. What we did was look at the factors.
I, I understand it.
And that's all I'm responding to.
I'm not criticizing the area. I wish somebody, but Oregon City staff had put it forward. I understand why it was put forward, and I, I mentioned it.
Well, actually, the county staff, it was in their staff report to include U-8.
Okay.
Yeah, it was in the county staff.
Well, the county staff said this was from Oregon City's map. They said that last night. You were there. They said, "Well, this is from Oregon City's map."
Well, they did say that.
They did say that.
But they didn't have to accept it.
Well, that's what they said.
That was their analysis also, so I mean...
Well, they stated this is what Oregon City presented.
Okay.
That was, it was a red flag.
Well, I never had any...
Whatever direction you wish to go.
Yeah, yeah. There was no, no way that, that, that I envisioned that we were going to go out to Beaver Creek. That, that seems like a long ways. I think what I envisioned is that if the county studied the edge right around the urban growth boundary, that there might be pieces there that would make sense for us to designate for some future, and certainly a long ways out there.
And I think it's important, this is a, still, we're still talking about a candidate area.
Right.
The committee has to come back, because this is also rural too. So the committee...
No, it was not designated as a rural area by, by our advisory.
None of this is...
None of it was. I'm surprised about that part.
Well, no, except, excuse me, the rural reserve area are different maps.
Right.
But the citizens of Beaver Creek were arguing for this to be rural, rural reserve.
Hold it. F is, F, the rural reserve area F, which I don't think you've got. Did you provide the rural reserve pieces in here? The rural reserve F was drawn in there. It included the, what we're calling the community of Beaver Creek, that, and it did not get designated as a, it did not get voted on for a rural reserve designation. The ultimate outcome might be much of this area ends up designated in the process. It's not my point. Whatever direction it goes, my point is this, you had the three fringe communities, Damascus is kind of separate, but three fringe established communities of, of Westland, Lake Oswigal, and To Waluton actually given, giving what their aspirations are. We have not given any. And I think that's our duty to do so. I have no problem going through a process that involves the planning commission, but planning is not the only issue before us. Sense of community is also an extremely important position. I think we should, I think we should draft in some form what our aspirations are. We have not done so. It's as if we have no opinion.
Well, remember, I, over and over again, was advocating for some citizen-driven process where we talked to our community about how big we wanted to be, that, and, you know, what we want to do.
It's honest now.
What?
It's honest now.
Well, I know, it's too late for that.
No, it's not too late. We can, we can, we can, we can as a commission come up with a...
Yeah, as a commission, no, no, I, I want it.
Westland did that, Lake Oswigal did that, and To Waluton did it.
Yes, but they went through processes with their citizens also, and we didn't do that.
Well, we should have, and we didn't. And now's the time to do it.
I think it's too late.
I'm going to move this forward to the planning commission for discussion with the, with the provision that it's going to come back to us. I so make the motion. It goes to the planning commission that we may have a study decision, but that this comes back to us. That's my motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, that, so the motion is that the verbiage as presented...
As drafted. This is a draft.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but the...
I understand it can be changed.
Okay, but your motion is that as, as presented, we can tamper, tamper with it.
That's right.
Right? Okay, and seconded by Commissioner Nacita. Commissioner West.
So Doug, am I understanding you then that, that really what the next thing is going to happen is we'll just have a joint planning session, a meeting, and we'll, we will identify our local aspirations and hash this out.
And this comes back to us as a commission?
And, and then, yes, of course, that we would probably make the final call on this. Okay, because I think I could support that. Because that, my questions, a lot of them were with process. Is this the right time in the process? And, you know, we expect all our other community partners to honor the process and our citizens to honor the process, so are we honoring the process of, of seeing this through a little farther down the road? But I would be more than willing to go to planning commission and have a heart-to-heart talk, and this time get a little more specific on what we want to put in.
Yeah, I, I think...
But I, is it the right time in the urban rural reserves process?
I would say if anything, it's too late.
It's too late. Yeah, right. That's what I've been saying.
I'm not going to sit, I'm not going to sit here and let the process get ahead of where we want to be.
Yeah, no, I, I hear you, because I've been arguing for six months that we should have done something, but...
Well, I'm making it go. That didn't happen before.
Well, the...
The motion is on, I'm going to call a question.
Well, you, you can call a question, we can continue your discussion. The, the, no, no, it's a, if it's a motion, then immediately calls it, but just calling the question is not a motion. So that's, leaves it to the discretion of the, of the chair. I think what's missing for me is that, that there are no pieces of the others that belong in that circle for me. And I'd like an opportunity to comment under the local aspirations heading on...
All of them.
U-6, U-7, and U-9 as well, and determine that, because I think this is only one, one piece of it.
Well, I, you know, I've got, actually, I've got no problem with that.
Could we add those? Because I would like to be able to have...
Comprehensive.
I'd like to be able to have comment on that.
You can, you can add those, but here's the situation. The city made specific recommendations on U-7. We've made, they, in a sense, that you, what you see there in U-7 is not what was recommended by the, by the city. It was recommended as a study area, but we were only talking about the fringe, right? U-9, there was an area that it was indicated on the maps presented by the city, an area that the city could serve, basically. That's essentially what got approved by the Policy Advisory Committee. U-6, we've had discussions on that. U-8, there was nothing.
Was never reduced.
We never discussed.
Well, we did, actually.
Well, no, our maps did not indicate. We had a lot of discussions about the fringe. We had a presentation of what we felt could be served in U-9. That was on the map. U-8 was U-8.
Hmm.
So in, in effect, I would say we already had presentations about U-7, U-9, U-6, which did not include all those areas. And if you look...
Okay. Well, I have absolutely no problem with looking at, at drilling down and getting serious about it. I guess I thought that a recommendation would come back from, you know, staff and county that was doing some drilling down on, on, on reducing the size of these parcels, and that we would...
U-8 does not suggest at all in this resolution that anything be excluded from the urban reserve eight. It states that if that whole area is brought in, then the city doesn't want to take the responsibility for the whole area. I, I have not suggested anywhere in this sense of resolution that any piece of U-8 be excluded as an urban reserve. That's not there.
I'd like to see some pieces excluded, but...
Well, no, but that's not what my resolution is talking about. My, my piece is talking about Oregon City's aspiration. If the decision is to extend the urban growth reserve designation in U-8 beyond the Oregon City fringe extending east of Caulfield Basin and beyond the area south of Oregon City extending on both sides of 213, if it does that, then, I have not recommended in here that we reduce U-8. I am saying, if you, if the decision on the urban reserve area is to extend beyond those areas, then, I have not suggested at all that U-8 be considered as undesigned, any part of it, or...
Okay, okay. Well, thank you. I've had a hard time figuring out what this really means. Okay, because I would really like to...
If, if is a very important word.
Okay, I see it. I see it now. Okay, I could support that. But I would really like for us to come to grips with the pieces that we want as our local aspiration. So however we get to that, whether it's through the planning commission process, I mean, I think the joint, the joint process worked pretty well, but I mean, I don't know whether staff can give us a recommendation of smaller, smaller pieces and analyze what the recommendations from the polling at the committee did, but that would be really helpful. Because, I mean, these maps are, I mean, we, it'd be good, again, to sit around that big map to see what the boundaries are, because this is pretty small to look at.
Let me point out again, U-8 area is almost as big as current Oregon City.
You know, I see, I see.
U-6, U-9, U-7, U-8.
Yeah, but I don't think any of us ever believed that we were going to be looking at that.
I understand.
So I'd like to, I'd like to really cut it down. But, that said, I, I mean, I don't have any problem with, with, with this as long as additional study comes along with it to get those pieces down to what we truly believe in, so that these, these designated, the study areas are, become smaller, become what we really want.
I think you're talking about two different things.
I think we are too, but I'm not sure how they fit together.
We can, we can show you maps and carve it up in pieces. I think the local aspiration of what you see as Oregon City today, and whether that is the same view you look at in 20 or 50 years, is something you're going to have to decide.
Well, I think the urban growth, I mean, I think we've really essentially agreed that with, except for maybe some willing land property owners, that the UGB probably isn't going to be moved for 20 years. And I think that's the sense of both the community and the region. And, and, but for 50 years, then, I think we're looking at some smaller chunks than, than what's on this map.
If I may...
Yes, sir.
I've lived here for 20 years. 20 years seems like a long time. 20 years, the last 20 years of my life doesn't seem like it's been that long.
Yeah. And I, yeah, I think the action's going to happen after that, but, anyway, there's a motion on the floor. Is there any other discussion? I'm not sure where this is going necessarily. Let's discuss it.
Well, it's got to start somewhere.
Right, no, I agree. This is the start.
And we've got, frankly, I don't think we've had the leadership to push this forward. I'm taking that leadership now.
Okay, I appreciate that.
May I move the question as opposed to call the question?
No, 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 just vote. I'll, I'll...
Okay.
I was just going to ask Nancy. Nancy, please call the commission.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nacita?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Okay, so we'll, thanks Doug for starting that, and we'll move it, we'll see this again. We, these, the, the final designations for the urban rural reserves, I think, are in March now. It's been moved back a little bit. Okay, next, moving into communications. moving into communications, Larry.
Just a couple of quick things. I should say on that last topic, though, if we're going to have these discussions, we probably need some ma, if I was from-
We do.
If I was, if I was watching this, and we were talking about Middle Earth and those things, I'd think we were talking about hobbits and what have you. For sure.
I, I think that what we also need is the areas that are, that were looked at as rural reserve areas.
Sure.
We need both.
Yeah, I just, it's very hard to follow if you cannot see what everyone's talking about, and I think that's-
Yeah, it'd be nice, it'd be nice for us to have a session where we can look at the
maps together on the table.
I think that's why we're going to have a work session.
Yeah, that'd be good. Excuse me, Larry, I apologize. We did have Christine Kozinski wish to comment on this top, topic, and I apologize. I had it, and then I got distracted myself.
Christine, when you come up, I'd like you to just say yes or no to a question I'm going to ask you. Do you believe that there was a feeling that the U8 expressed a, an aspiration of Oregon City when that was presented?
Christine Kozinski, unincorporated Clackamas County. Because you're speaking through urban extension tonight, I feel it is important for you to hear the same testimony I gave to, gave to the PAC last night. This last Saturday at the Farmers Market, the following petition was circulated, keep Beaver Creek rural. I support protecting the Beaver Creek community's small farms, natural features, and rural landscape for future generations. We ask that the handling of Beaver Creek be preserved as a rural reserve. This scenic area is an important buffer between urban and rural life, and contributes to the economic welfare of Oregon City and the Farmers Market. Beaver Creek is an emerging, emerging community, spawning green jobs for small farms, producing local nutritious foods for our citizens, restaurants, schools, caterers, and markets. It took two people only three hours of time to collect all of these signatures. It wasn't hard. There's 144 signatures here. Eighty-nine of them came from 97045 zip code, stating that even your Oregon City voters want small farms and the Farmers Market. This petition states the community's overwhelming support to retain open land for small farms in the Beaver Creek area. The signatures were not just from Beaver Creek, but from a very wide area. We therefore are going to present our petition along with the 144 signatures, and ask that both Clackamas County, Metro, and the city take seriously the will of the people. We ask that you plant for more open space for small farms needed as we go forward into the future. Thank you.
Thank you. That's very important. Okay, now-
If I may-
Dr., oh, yes.
Turns out I've got no conflict with the second Tuesday as our next study session, simply because we have this meeting on the first Tuesday instead of the second one. We're going to have these meetings here on a more frequent basis. I would like to, if you can do the, the study session on a Thursday as this process is going through, it would be far more convenient for me. Otherwise, I would not go to the, to the PAC to attend the study session here on a Tuesday, if there's a con-
But this one's okay.
This one, yeah, this coming Tuesday's not a problem. But they have generally been on the second and fourth Tuesday. Was not the case this time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now, Barry.
Earlier this week, I did, or maybe it was Friday, I can't remember now, I did send you via email kind of a goals update on where we're at. I do understand I got a section I need to correct, and I'll do that. I think it, it speaks more to what the objectives were, and I, and, but the accomplishments are still, I think, very similar in there. So, and I would add to that list now, perhaps, what we're going to undertake with CHP, which will only add to that somewhat, depending on what comes-
That's in there.
Huh?
I think that's in there.
Not in what we agreed to this evening.
Oh, well, the dollar sign's not quite the same.
Which also, too, some of the things that may come out of there may result in the need also for you to add some city capacity to handle that issue more appropriately. There's some breakdowns, as you saw this evening, and, again, you don't really have a neat department that that whole type of issue fits into. But, that's just for future issues as we work through that. Also, too, at the last wastewater partners meeting, the group really felt, and I will say that I led a lot of that discussion, that it's time to maybe redraft that partners' agreement, kind of narrow that down. So, it really does give the outline of what that group is about as an advisory committee, because that seems to be adding to some of the confusion. Chris Jordan and I are going to try to take a first cut at that, which we'll present to that group, and see if we can get to agreement as we move towards that sewer 101 issue. And then finally, next Tuesday, you actually have two meetings. You have the Urban Rail Commission meeting. We're looking at that starting at 4:30, followed by the work session, whenever we can move into that. So, you're going to have a pretty busy evening, and probably a long evening on, on Tuesday. So, because both of those are going to be-
4:30?
It looks like 4:30. I think it's the most convenient for all parties. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. May I piggyback on to that? Because I believe all of you are in receipt of a request from our judge. It's time, she has a two-year contract, and we do an annual, we do an evaluation and, and a conversation with her. Kind of to Doug's, Commissioner Neely's point, too, we may have the need to move the September work session. Would it be possible to move, if, if, if there's not enough business, we can cancel the September one, but would Monday, August 31st be a time that we could meet possibly for two reasons? One would be at, at 4:30 to do, if, if the judge is available, I haven't asked her. I didn't, didn't discuss dates with her today, but to do her performance evaluation, and that would be an executive session, followed by our work session, which would be early. That would suit your needs, perhaps. It's Monday.
The session we're talking about is-
Would be the September work session, but it would be moved to August 31st. That's what you were suggesting, right?
That's not Labor Day.
Nope. Labor Day is the next week.
Yeah, you're talking about Thursday.
No, this is Monday, August 31.
No.
Oh, you can't do that?
No.
Whoop, we'll go back to the drawing board on that. We'll do that by email, or have somebody pull, pull everybody. Okay, now, it's time for commission reports for places where you go to-
I gave mine.
You gave yours, all right. You're finished. Commissioner Smith? Committees you attended?
Well, not committees. I just wanted to mention a couple of things. I, it seems like there were so many events going on. The McLaughlin Promenade kickoff was a great event, but I spoke on Saturday also at the Sustainability Fair at Atkinson Park, and it was really great. A really great event, unfortunately, very, very, very few people there. And so, I commented about the, the hopes to kind of, you know, help see that continue, and, and with a little bit more attention, because it was really great, and, and learned some great things. They actually had the entire event with lots of different, about 10 or so vendors, booths, some, some groups from Portland came in, and they had live music all off the grid. They had a trailer there, a solar-powered generator that was powering all the stage and everything. So, it was, it was very cool. And so, wanted to mention that and thank the group for Sustainable Today and Gordon Westfall, who worked on that project. And then, I think I ended up tying the mayor. I went to the National Lightout events last night, and I made it to three out of the five, so I felt fairly good about that. It was 10 minutes to eight, and I was at Rivercrest, and I knew the mayor was like ahead of me by one park, so-
Had to run.
There was a lot of police and fire around, so I drove very carefully to Kenyema, and they were still, still there. And had a live band there as well, and it was just a, a lot of fun last night, and-
It was.
It was nice to see the turnout and all the kids, and so I wanted to thank those neighborhoods, and also apologize to the neighborhoods that I didn't make it to. I really tried, but-
It's hard to do it all.
Yeah, we might want to expand that for three hours or something, so we can make it all around town or something. But, thank you for that.
And my suggestion's always been to have the one at Taping Park on a different night, so that we could make, make them. But I also want to thank the Fire Department and the Police Department for their great turnout. They were at all of them, and not all the same people, though. So, it was really, really a wonderful community effort. So, who's next? Commissioner West?
Yeah, I'll do a segue. Well, just today, I'm a little funny about talking tonight. I'm getting jinxed by Doug here in my glasses. So, anyway, I'm just kidding. We got an email today from Lloyd Purdy, our downtown manager, and he's been doing a great job downtown with all the businesses on Main Street, and working on our arch, our arch bridge restoration project. And somehow, he found out that we have some negotiating room with the Federal Highway Works Administration. So, and apparently, from the FHWA, that organization, they asked ODOT to explain why a project scheduled for one year had become a two-year project, and it's opened a window of opportunity for downtown stockholder, stockholders, stakeholders, I'm reading, typo, stakeholders to comment on this project. So, now Lloyd would also like us to weigh in on this project, because according to ODOT's original port, a report to the FHWA, downtown Oregon City does not exist. He's being a little facetious. In this report, ODOT makes minimal reference to downtown, our business community, and the long-term bridge, or impact the bridge closure will have. So, I just love Lloyd. He's, he's the guy with the golden, squeaky, squeaky, golden everything. So, his title of this press release was, "This is not a bridge to nowhere." I just love it. So, he got you to read the email. So, anyway, if you have time, Lloyd has also sent a sample letter, and we could even just sign off on the letter as is, but we would, within the next week, we want all the comments as possible, whether you're a person that rides a bicycle across that bridge every day, or if you're a walk across the bridge, or you're a downtown business owner. We have an opportunity to weigh in here with an import, or a federal agency, and maybe change some of this, and get a little different outcome on this bridge restoration project. So-
And I will be doing a walk, a walk across the bridge with Jason Tell, who's the director, ODOT Director of Region One, with the Commissioner, County Chair Peterson, Lloyd, and a couple of other elected officials to talk with ODOT directly and on the ground about the needs of our downtown and the needs of our community.
So, a little bit more on the Main Street news. We've been talking a lot about the parking study that has been performed, what, the last six months, and going around to different groups, the court system, the sheriffs, or the police agencies, and our Main Street businesses. And I, I just think that's really been going well, how we've been out talking about it, because through that already, we have got commitment from the court system to have a parking liaison person to come down to our Main Street meetings on a regular basis. So, that's, can only be good news for Main Street. Different segue. Oh, how did I find out about this? While I was working on a Comittee, and I heard a recommendation from someone about how great this economic development course was. It was really just a general 101 economic development course, and this is put on by the State of Oregon and the State of Washington, and it's taking place in Allensburg, Washington, in about a week. And I am sorry for such a late request on this, but I was waiting to see how my own calendar, my schedule would play out before I would make a commitment wanting to go. So, I applied to go to this week-long economic development course, and this, let's see, the Oregon Business Development Department gave me a $520 scholarship for my tuition.
Congratulations.
Thank you. But, so anyway, the room and board for the week, which is very reasonable, is $480, and that includes everything but just a couple meals and my gas there and back. So, I was hoping that my fellow commissioners would support me in going to this conference, as I am the economic development liaison for the city, and I was a member of Urban Renewal Agency, and also on our Main Street Board. It's really important for all of us to get up to snuff on things. And after listening to the, a report earlier from, from the, our agent, our historic entities in all our tourism industry with CHP, there is a lot of classes on tourism in this, too. So, it would be all encompassing. It's not just a Main Street, it's everything from tourism, business retention.
I have no objection. Does anyone? Right, go for it.
And then I'll probably call in the meeting that week and watch it on a new, cool granicus and be on the telephone. Well, thank you very much, and I will-
Bring back good ideas.
Yes. Oh, I know what I was going to say. In the, one of the reasons I really wanted to go is, you know, a conference, especially on the ground, this is a small one, 55 people. It's not, so, it's going to be a very interactive with all the other people at it. But, was my, my encouragement, or my example of going to conferences, why they're so valuable, was with, I was at the Friends of the Cemetery meeting, and Larry Potter was giving his report and, to the friends, and so hard to believe, but he had just gone to a national conference in Las Vegas, and he came back and he said, "You know, I didn't know our cemetery was any big deal." He said, "I didn't know it was an urban cemetery. I didn't know it was up to the snuff of city cemeteries." And he was so shocked at how, because we think we're just little old Oregon City, of what a nice caliber cemetery that was. And, and then he learned all the other people's rates, and what do you know, in two weeks here, they were, we were way out of line. So, he also had some ideas that we'll probably hear about, too, for green cemeteries and green burials, which is kind of interesting, too. But, when you go to a conference, it's, I think they're just worth a million.
We just don't believe in the state, we just don't believe in Oregon City should pay a whole lot of money to die.
Well, you still aren't. You're still only paying maybe average.
That's right.
Maybe average.
What do you mean? Those are our per-
Low, low.
Those are our permanent residents. We need to really honor them.
Ah, thank you.
Thank you, Daphne. Good, good report. Just to add to all of the other things we've been doing, yeah, the work on the promenade is, has it gotten started, Nancy? By the end of the, it's supposed to be this week or next, huh? We had, we, because there's no digging and no tree removal, we did a golden chisel. So, we just, it turned out that we actually chiseled a piece off of-
No, we didn't. No, 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 no.
I did. I did at the direction of our City Engineer and Public Works Director, and was told by the consultant that that wasn't part of the project, but now it is. Just a little tiny piece, and I think I, I think we cost, I think we, Nancy, you and I might have to do penance for that one.
I'm not sure, but Nancy gave you the chisel. I don't recall you asking where she should do it.
No, I did. I, I gave, I asked, and she said, "Yes, go ahead." I asked, I asked if I should take a little piece off. She said, "Go for it." So, anyway, I just follow directions.
No matter what, the commission will always blame staff.
Oh, no. I did it. I held the chisel, I do have to say, and I was really embarrassed about that. But, anyway, this is now a bigger project than it once thought to be. But anyways, great to have that started. It was a very enthusiastic group, and you might call it, actually, a hot gathering. The dilly bars melted before they got into our mouths, actually, it was that hot. And I commend Nancy Crasher and the Public Works staff for the way they put, put it together. Again, very nicely and professionally done, with recognition given to all parties that, that participated in receiving that stimulus money. The Solar Town Hall was held here in this room, and also very well-attended. ODOT answered questions, community asked very hard ones, and we'll just continue to monitor how that, that project is going. I want to congratulate, is Mike still here? Chief? Can't see him. The Police Department, the most exciting thing, I think that we haven't announced, actually, in this room, though, are the two cops grants that we were awarded from the federal government, and that's a, that's a pretty exciting thing, because out of 21, 21- No, the, no, the seven, we-
There are 287 requests in the state. 21 were granted, and we got two.
And we got two of them. So, we got- And we got two of them. So, we got one tenth, one tenth of the state money. So, congratulations. So, we'll be having, we'll, we'll have two new police officers in the very short term. Mike, Chief, did you want to say anything about that at all? Sorry, cut you off, good.
I just wanted to actually say, I think we're very fortunate in getting the two grants, obviously. We had a really, a good history of outlining, or outlining our, our need for it based on population and crime rate. And I'd like to congratulate our records manager, Sharon Coughlin, and Lieutenant Jim Ban, who actually worked on the grant together, wrote it, submitted it, monitored it, even got a congressional letter of recommendation from Kurt Schrader. So, I think it was a really good effort on staff to get it, and we're looking forward to hiring some officers and getting them on the road as soon as we can.
Yes, that's, that's really exciting. And then Commissioner West alluded to the tour that we took of some, two police depart, new police stations that sort of made us green with envy, but also gave us a lot, certainly me, I can only speak for myself, really a good understanding of the components that go into a well-functioning facility, and that's what we will hope to have here in, very soon. And I believe we're going to see some plans and hear about that at our work session. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other reports to come before us? Commissioner Nacita?
It's not a report. It is a quick communication. I just want to extend condolences to the family of my next-door neighbor, John Creach, who passed away this Sunday. He was in his early seventies, and he was a welcoming and very hospitable neighbor, and made me feel right at home when I moved into Oregon City. So, I'd just like to wish the best to his wife, Alice, and his extended family.
Thank you. For no other further business, we are adjourned into executive session pursuant to ORS 1926602E, to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions, and ORS 192, 1926602E, which is deliberation, to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions, and ORS 1992D, to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations.
Madam Mayor, I'd request a ten-minute break or a five-minute break.